Test, test. Commissioner Wilson, can you hear us? Test, test, test.
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, thank you.
Do we confirm if Commissioner Wilson can hear us?
Can you hear us okay, Lisa?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Hey, it's six o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order on this 22nd day of June 2021. As a reminder, if you are on our Zoom meeting as a participant, please put yourself on mute unless you are speaking. We are currently live streaming this meeting on the city's YouTube channel and the Lake County PEG TV livestream YouTube channel. The council chambers are open to the public to attend meetings in person. And Madam Clerk, if we can start with the roll call, please.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner McCarrick?
Present.
Vice Chair Coker?
Here.
And Chair Davis?
Here.
And if we can all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, to the republic of our citizens, to the people of this country.
The agenda items will be open for public comment before final action is taken via Zoom or email. And the Planning Commission meetings are also open to the public in the City Hall Council chambers. Do we have any public comment at this time? Wrong time?
On the agenda meeting procedures, we would just need to ask staff if there's any changes to the agenda.
I'm sorry. Do we have any changes to our agenda?
No changes.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda item, please?
So moved.
In a second?
Seconded.
Roll call.
Chair Davis, to clarify, this is the adoption of the agenda, move, motion to adopt the agenda. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get it straight one of these times, I promise.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Coker?
Yes.
And Chair Davis?
Yes. So our item for business this evening is for the appeal to AP 2021-01 of administrative use permit. And if we can have our staff report.
Senior Planner Roberts is going to present the staff report. I'm going to share my screen. It has a few slides.
So good evening, everybody. So we're here tonight to hear the appeal of administrative use permit, AUP 2021. The project is located at 3006 Old Highway 53, further described as APN 010-040-04. The land use destination is RR, which is referred to as rural residential, and the general plan destination is LDR, which is low density residential. And it's approximately plus or minus 1.86 acres in size. So we're here tonight to hear the applicant's requests, which the applicant is requesting approval of an administrative use permit, AUP 2021-01, to allow the total square footage of the accessory structures to exceed that of the primary residence, which is approximately 1,600 square feet. So if approved, it would allow the installation of a new prefabricated garage, approximately 3,000 square feet in size. It'd be factory coated with electric capabilities for personal storage purposes only. And any relevant agencies such as fire, building permits, and everything would have to be, of course, obtained prior to the construction of the permit. So a bit of background, on April 26, 2021, we held the administrative hearing. A hearing date and time was coordinated with the applicant, and a duly noticed, in accordance with the Clear Lake Municipal Code, Section 18-28-030, public hearing was held on Monday, April 26. All the legal notices were sent out in accordance to the applicable codes, and the mailing addresses we used are from the Assessor's Records Office, the legal mailing addresses. There were some public concerns during the hearing that included but not went into noise, potential commercial use, lighting concerns, and so forth. And those have been addressed in conditions of approval, which start on page nine, I believe, of your staff report. So based on the significant concerns from neighboring property owners and the lack of corresponding participation from the applicant, the administrative use permit was denied. So for the appeal submittal, the applicant was notified of the appeal rights and deadlines via email and notified of the staff's intent to appeal on April 26, 2021. And we are in coordination with the applicant since notifying and then notice of determination. And the applicant, the application was submitted for appeal of this decision on May 13, 2021, approximately six days after the deadline, but we coordinated with the applicant and prior to that of being alerted, we wanted to file the appeal. So for environmental review, upon review, the administrative use permit is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 15061B3, which is essentially the common sense, and therefore does not require further environmental review. So for conditions of approval, it's, if you refer to Exhibit A of the staff report, which is pages nine through 12. So some of the ones that are most outstanding are like condition number nine, where it states no commercial activities authorized by this permit, and no outdoor storage of vehicles or materials shall occur. Number 11, the structure shall be fully enclosed on all sides and have a non-transparent roof, solid roof, and there shall be no open breezeway or doors. And then condition number 12, essentially to summarize it, it says that all lighting needs to be directed downward and not project across the property lines. And that, another one is the applicant needs to hear to the applicable code, excuse me, of the Clear Lake Municipal Code. So those are just some of the conditions. If you have any questions upon further ones, I'm more than happy to address those. So for the options, so for the Planning Commission, you have the following options. Option one is to deny appeal application AP 2021-01 with specific findings, or approve resolution PC 2021-16 for the administrative use permit, AUP 2021-01, authorizing the installation of an oversized garage at 3006 Old Highway 53, further described as Assessor Parcel Number 010-040-040. That concludes my presentation, but if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to address them. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson, do you have any questions for the staff?
Who's the owner of record of the property? Is it the applicant?
Yes, that'd be Jamie Felden.
So I see another name on the quote for the building, so I was curious about who that is. Is the applicant here tonight?
Yes, she is.
Okay, I don't have any other questions from staff. Thank you.
I had questions. I addressed them to the staff earlier about, completely drawing a blank on my questions. If there was, I was clarifying because it said no vehicles outside of the structure. And so I wanted to clarify if that meant inside as well, but the structure, I was told, is allowed to have vehicles inside as long as there's no commercial use, and as proposed. And then the other one was just, you know, ensuring that if there is a building permits pulled, that there is the sign-off requirements in terms of safety with electricity and other building code adherences. So my questions were answered. Those were my questions.
I have a couple of questions. In the staff report, it says that the building is 3,000 square feet, but all of the quotes for installation and also the purchase state that it's 40 by 50. What is the actual square footage that we are being asked to approve? Because that's 1,000 square feet difference.
Can you come up, please? So and if you don't mind, if you can state your name for the record when you start, okay?
I'm Jamie Fielden. I'm the applicant, an owner of 3006 Old Highway 53. We started this application in October, and this has been quite a wild ride. So we were told that they had to actually come up with a whole nother permit, an administrative use permit. As you can see, we're the first ones to put one in because it didn't call up, our permit request didn't qualify because the change of the ordinance in Clear Lake. So when we first started it, we could afford a 60 by 50 building. And we were told different things, you know, of course, we needed approval for the permit for it to go through first. But in order to lock in the price, we actually continued to have to downsize the building in order to afford it because the prices of steel and construction continue to increase. So currently, what we can afford is a $100,000 building, and unfortunately, we've lost 1,000 square feet in order to do that. So that's why there's two different quotes in there. So we've submitted three applications at this point.
At this point, we're looking at a 2,000 square foot?
40 by 50.
Forty, so it is 2,000 square feet, not 3,000.
Yeah. And to answer why there's a separate name on the quote, it's because my partner and I have been dealing with two different areas. As you can see, it's a pretty big project. So I've been working with the city and he's been working with the building. Trying to, you know, it's our workshop. We have quite a large collection of personal use cars. That's our hobby.
Is that you? Yeah, that answers my question. Thank you. The rest of the questions that I had, I presented to staff and got answers for. Thank you.
I did have one more question. So with the, there's the approval, the proposal for the garage, and then in looking at one of the sites, the site that has the star on it, is there any requirement or proposal for like any sort of driveway to that? Like to get the cars back there? Is there any?
Well, I mean, it would require some type of all-weather surface all the way from, from back there, yeah.
That was my question.
I don't know if I should ask my questions now or let the public finish commenting. So with no other comments here, do we have any public comments? You want to please step forward and state your name for the record?
I'm Thomas McNicholas. My pseudonym is Nick McNicholas. I live at 3009 Old Highway 53. I came up to Lake County in 1998. I purchased this property in 1999, so I've been here for over 20 years. I was the person who was on the Zoom with you last time and had some concerns. You've hit most of those concerns, and I do appreciate that. My, my question is, you won't be there, I will. If they, the building is created, the cars go in it, and then 20 other cars are just put all over the place. So I have a concern about that. Things have improved. When the, when the petitioner first moved in, it seems like every night in their driveway was a motorcycle or a car revving, revving. Nobody knows what a muffler is. And then they'd get on Old 53 and run down the road, run back. That has almost dissipated. My other half came up two weeks ago. I was at a convention, and she said, "Well, I got the lights in the living room because there's a white truck that parks right at my house and turns his lights on and runs his engine for some reason. And I have good blinds, but it just shoots up, and this lights up my whole house." That truck now is parked in a different direction. And again, that was nice. But my other half said, "God, the engine just was idling, idling," because they're working right out of the garage and the driveway right there. And I'm glad somebody brought up something about how they can get these cars back there. Just tonight, when I came down here, there was at least 12 to 14 vehicles around the house. I have nothing against the petitioner building and doing that. I am very selfish. I own a home. I'm 74 years old, which means I could die tomorrow. I could live in under 20 years. One, either way, I'm going to sell my house sometime. And I've had several of my friends joking around saying, "Hey, can you put a good word in me for your neighbor? I'd like to get parts for a VW." Ha, ha, ha. I don't think that's funny. It's a nice, quiet place, and, and I'm really the only neighbor right next to everybody because everybody else is off to the side and down a ways. So I'm really concerned about that. I don't know if there's some kind of buffer, if they're going to be working on those vehicles and that. And how far back is this building? I had not seen anything about that. The stuff you put up there, I didn't get a copy of that. So I think that's, those are my questions. And like I said, you had taken care of most of them because I was concerned about rural residential. I mean, if I just wanted to open up a business in my house, could I do that? And I think the answer is no. If I wasn't charging anybody, but just offering services, I still would be bringing a lot of traffic into the area. So I hope the answer is no, because we don't need businesses out there. Right? Thank you very much.
I'm Dave Hughes, and I live at 2705 Old Highway 53, but I'm actually, which is in the neighborhood. But I'm actually here to represent the Biassadi's who own the property to the south of this property, 3130 and 3180 Denton Lane. They access their property on Denton Lane, which is next to the nursery on the old highway at Olympic. One of their concerns, I'll bring it up first. When you come in on Denton Lane, Mr. Biassadi told me there's been an illegal grow there annually for years. And he doesn't want to see that happening next door on this property. I suppose that doesn't have a lot to do with the garage, but I think his point is, is there some way to make sure they don't do an illegal grow? And I suppose if staff goes in periodically and inspects the, the property, then, and I think that's in the use permit, that would probably satisfy that condition. But I told them I would bring it up, and I know you can still do your, I guess you can still do your six plants for your personal use. So that was one concern you had. By the way, I also made a copy of an aerial photo. And the purpose was, was primarily just to show a little bit more about where my client, by the way, the property, the Biassadi property is on the market. It has been for a couple of years. He had four. He had four parcels right in that vicinity, the other three are sold. This is the last one and it's outlined in purple to the south of the 3006. So they do have a common line. I went yesterday and drove out to the property. There are some vehicles now that look like they're probably right on the property line or real close to it. And I suppose this might take care of that issue. One of the questions I do have is, do we have something in our ordinance that limits the number of vehicles that one can have on their property? Or is it based on property size? I mean, I guess.
I'm happy to address that maybe when you're done with your comments about the vehicles.
Okay. Yeah. So I'm just curious if there's a maximum number because I know there's quite a few vehicles there now. In fact, if you look at her presentation in writing, you know, she talks about 20, 20 vehicles, five dirt bikes, two boats, three street bikes, two side by sides, a slingshot, two trailers, two enclosed trailers and one fifth wheel and a tractor. I don't know what, I think there's a couple of quads there now or anyway. I'm just curious if there's a maximum because I don't think all of those are going to fit in a 2,000 square foot garage. And in fact, they even say the garage will house six cars and behind the fence, there may be three to four cars. And there's, you know, right now there's, if you add the trailers and the pontoon boat and the other things, there's probably 20 vehicles there easily. My next question would be, does our ordinance say where you can park vehicles? I know in the front yard, you're supposed to stay in the driveway. And, and I know right now vehicles are parked next to the driveway and next to the driveway and kind of next to the house, maybe even on the church's property next door. So again, maybe this will take care of that. Condition seven talks about having a sufficient setback from the property line due to the size of the garage. Let me get to that. And then having appropriate setbacks and, and or buffering techniques, fencing walls, berms, landscaping. And I know the two properties to the west of their property are mentioned here by AP number, but my client's property to the south and the church's property to the east are not. And even though there's nothing on those properties, someday there may be something on those properties. The whole point of selling the five acres to the south is sell to somebody who wants five acres and wants to build a home. So we're trying to make sure that there is buffering and there is landscaping. And I would actually like to see condition seven met before the use permit is granted. I'd like, I'd like to see what those buffering techniques are that they're going to use rather than just say, you got to buffer it somehow and give us a plan. I think it would be only fair for the, for the concerned neighbors to see that before the use permit is granted. On page 22, the site plan that, that the applicant drew up mentions, I get confused because I think her verbal or her written part of the application and some of these site plans kind of differ a little bit. But if you look at page 22, it shows to me the garage and the fencing and everything in the southeast corner of the property. Now, I don't know if that's against the property line. She does also mention that she's at least 200 feet from a neighbor to the west. This property is 162 feet wide. And the house to the west sits on the property line or real close to it. There's no way it could be 200 feet from that house to this 40 by 50 building. So again, I'm just trying to clarify where this is going to be. We'd like to have buffering from the south side, landscaping and, and quite frankly, we'd like to see the plan before the use permit is granted. Let's see. I had a, on page 23, it's a more detailed drawing of the building and the fencing around it. And I just had a question. I mean, I was sitting here playing with it. It looks like there's no fence behind the building. So the fence will go up to the edge of the building in the rear. And there's no fencing between the building and the south property that say there is buffering on the sides. But the way I got this measured, from the fence to the front of the building is going to be 10 feet. I mean, that's the way it looks to me based on the measurements that I'm seeing on her plan. And to me, it seems like it would be difficult to go in the gate, turn onto this 10 foot driveway that's got a fence on one side and a building on the other and be able to actually pull your car into the garage. 10 foot's pretty narrow. So again, I, maybe I'm wrong, but it just seems like, again, maybe if we saw the plan, we would be more comfortable. Number nine. Let's see, what's number nine? Oh, it says no commercial activity is authorized by this permit. No outdoor storage of vehicles or materials. Does that mean if she can only get six vehicles in that garage, the other 14 have to go somewhere else? I mean, it says no outdoor storage of vehicles. So she's talking about six in the building, three or four outside between the fence and the building, which is not, to me, that's outdoors. So I'm just trying to get clarification on that condition. Again, if she only gets so many vehicles in the building and so many vehicles behind the fence, there's still more vehicles and, and what do we do with those? Let's see, I think, I think that about covers. I do have a, again, it goes back to the other question I had was where are we allowed to park our vehicles? I know in our ordinance, it's got a front yard. You're supposed to stay in the driveway. So again, not only how many are you limited to the number of vehicles, but also where you can park them. Again, this is 1.86 acres, so there's a lot of room. But right now everything's parked in front, well, not everything, but I can count easily four or five cars to the left of the garage, the travel trailer, a few in the driveway and then behind the house towards the barn. There's usually a few more vehicles and to the side of their driveway, there's a few vehicles. So again, we're just trying to, to get an understanding as to what's there. So I think that pretty much covers our, our concerns. And I hope that the building is not on the property. So, thank you.
Would you like me to address the, okay, so the municipal code, there's nowhere in the municipal code that places a maximum number of vehicles that you can have on your property. However, there are a few different limitations. So you're only, you know, it's, it's a little bit difficult to dissect, but the idea is that registered vehicles are supposed to be like in your driveway or your garage. Any non-operable vehicles, which doesn't mean that you have a non-op certification through the DMV, but either it doesn't operate, it's not roadworthy and it's not actively registered. You're not allowed to have any of those vehicles within public view. So you can have them inside or whatever, but you know, you aren't allowed to have those vehicles just sitting around, at least within view of the public. And then to take that a little bit further, technically the, the zoning code limits the outdoor storage of just vehicles in general within public, public view. So arguably, whether it's registered or not, if it's just kind of sitting around in public view, you're not supposed to have that. Now, in this situation, the commission could be more specific about a number of vehicles or what type of vehicles or anything like that in the use permit conditions, if you liked. But there's, there's nothing in the municipal code currently that says you can only have five vehicles or anything like that.
Absolutely. Please come back up.
First, thank you so much for just hearing us out. And after reading the response when we weren't here for the initial permit hearing, I took those things, as you heard my neighbor, very much into consideration. We did not know those were affecting him due to lack of communication, but mostly because we rushed to move into this house when it wasn't even ready because our mother is on hospice care. So the coming and goings originally when we were moving in was the moving in process, but also our large family coming to say goodbye to our mom. And so when we saw that, we just kind of went, wow, like that must've looked horrible. But you know, not knowing us, they wouldn't have known that. Thank goodness she has 27% of her heart working and is recovering. They took her off hospice finally and she's doing very well. And so as far as our vehicles, let me just let you know, we know here, we do not do drugs. We do cars. And we have 16 road car and trucks, two side by sides, one slingshot, two boats, seven motorcycles, three trailers, one camp trailer and two enclosed trailers. And we pay $5,100 a month to various storage units and we do not have our complete collection in our home. And as far as what's on our property, everything is registered and running and within what's in front of our home. We use them daily. We have a business. We actually own 10 acres on the other end of the street of Old Highway 53 on Pond River, where we support developmentally disabled adults. And we do not at any time rev up. And we have people who go by and see our vehicles and they do not have horns or they're always, you know, good job on, on our vehicles because they are really historic, beautiful vehicles. And that's the point of this garage is that we have a couple cars that have show quality paint and are restored and are worth a lot of money and we don't want them out, outdoors. We simply can't continue to afford and could anybody at $5,100 a month? Like we're losing money. And so as we're kind of looking at, we want one place to store all of our stuff inside. Also Bobby is a mechanic. He works for the bus yard. And so as being a mechanic, you know, he has a plasma cutter, he has a welder. We don't want to do those things outside. But we can't do them next to a show car either. We don't want to start a fire. We don't want to destroy our stuff. We don't want, we want to be responsible adults. Before we even moved into the house, we applied for the workshop, knowing that this is the purpose of this, this property. The purpose was to get a bigger than property where we were low density residential area where we weren't impacting other people with our, what we were doing. Kind of moving forward, we do not grow. And not that I have anything against that. That's cool. Like do you? But we accept federal dollars for our business and we simply are fingerprinted through Department of Transportation, Department of Justice and FBI, and we are not capable of doing that. So we are, that's not on our agenda. That's not who we are in our future or present. As far as condition and the buffering and the site plan, I'm, I'm not an engineer. I did what I could with the site plan for, you know, we measured it out. We talked to our neighbors. I went off of some schematics that I had pulled up that are not a legal document. I could have put some more effort, I guess, into that, but at this point, I'm just happy that my mom's okay and that we're doing okay. So as far as where the placement is, we did want to put the garage in the back center. And you can see that on the site plan and we planned on putting a fence out and around the front of it. Behind us is a grove of trees that is on our property that will not be cut down. And so it wouldn't have an impact on the Biassadi's property as far as being an eyesore or impacting their property. We are required, I think I was told like three or seven or 10 feet, but we plan on doing 20 feet away from the back part of our property because of the trees. We don't want trees falling down on the garage and you know, it's a steel belt building, but if something fell or there, you know, we have wind or something picks up, we could have a problem with that. So we really kind of looked at where that would be. We wouldn't be removing any of the trees off of our property either as far as the walnut grove. As far as where the cars are parked right now is where the garage would be. That's where the cars are and that's not the church's property. And actually we've been helping maintain the church's property. We're, we're really good neighbors actually. We have been in contact with them and I don't remember the gentleman's name. But he's come out and he, you know, he had some stuff. He was clearing out that back property for the Biassadi's in the church and doing some work back there and he was accessing. And that's what was my point is where this blue line is, there's actually already in, not an easement, but a driven pathway that we had planned on putting a driveway because we don't want dirt on our cars to have good paint. So we had already planned on doing that. Of course, it wouldn't be initially because like I said, it's very expensive what we're doing, but we're definitely, that's in the works as well. That's our next project. As far as the cars and where they're parked, the driveway has three parts. And while you can see the U shape, what you can't see is there is a driveway up to our barn and that's where we park cars. And then on the side of the garage in front of where our propane tank is, there's a separate, separate like driveway that goes towards the back of our property and we park other vehicles there. Everything runs, everything's registered, everything's insured. And Bobby changes out whatever car or vehicle he drives every month and so do I. So as far as pleasure, as far as work, I drive two vehicles. I drive a truck and a forerunner. He drives a Toyota and then whatever pleasure vehicle he's driving. So that right there is four vehicles that are constantly being, but everything is in running condition. And, and as far as parts, nothing's for sale. Because you can't find these parts anymore for these vehicles. And then lastly, when we were talking about the conditions for buffering, we had put in there that we were actually hiring a local. We didn't put it in the site plan, but our plan is that we have already hired somebody to build, rebuild our fences. And they were going to build panels also just around the workshop that we're putting in that six feet by six feet. I already called and spoke to make sure that this wouldn't be a problem, that we would be able to be permitted for that as well. It's also part of the permit application. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I think you answered some of my questions.
And then lastly, just to say, we plan on trenching the power and not having it overheads, but we don't have P G M E issues. So we're willing to pay the extra to make sure that that's a priority.
Yeah. So one of the questions I had was in regards to the plan, if I'm, if I'm seeing the plan correctly, it looks like, is it, is it where the, the entrance would be on the east side?
So yeah, so the east side of the property, see where the trees are. It's actually between the trees and the property line, there's a telephone pole. The telephone pole is the indicator. There is a driveway there and it's more like 30 or 40 feet if there. That driveway is what is in existence to get to the back part of the property through the walnut grove as, as we bought it as in existence. And so that's how you reach the back part of the property. And yes, that is on the east, east, yeah, side going south. And then it would be in the south part of the property, behind the grove of the walnut trees.
And so the, the area where you're doing the proposed driveway or pathway, what, is, is there sufficient width for that?
Yeah, it's like 30 or 40 feet between the trees.
And then there's one more question.
We've driven our truck and dump trailer and I've passed him with my Duramax. So that's how wide it is. Two vehicles can pass each other. And these are big vehicles. These aren't like, you know, my forerunner, which is a smaller vehicle.
And it's, it's too, it's, it's on the property line and?
It's on my property and it would be, if you were passing me, my property line is the edge of their trees. So if you're looking south on my property, the telephone pole edges that line, that last line of trees right there. So on the other side of it, on my property is the driveway. So I wouldn't be approaching upon them at all.
And the, thanks.
And we spoke to the neighbors that are on our west, that'd be our west, and they're amazing. They're so excited about it. They're not here in protest. They, they told us to go for it. They gave us words of encouragement. They love, people stop by all the time and tell us that we don't know the guy who lived there was Leo. We love what you're doing with the house. This is our dream house. It looks great. And they have, well, have, you know, asked us, you know, told us they love what we're doing with the house. Like, we've made so much, so much improvements. We've got the entire house, and, and we have done the paint, the floors. We're fixing the pool. We're doing everything we can to make this an improvement, not an eyesore. And as far as the scheme, the paint scheme of the building also will match the house, which is a very simple black and white, very farmhouse look.
The only other question that I had was if the folks who are doing the building, the steel building, if they have looked at the site and they think the compaction is okay, and then there's any other plans, is there any grading or anything needs to happen?
So they have not seen the site. They have talked to us about the site. They've seen pictures of the site. They're in, I want to say Florida as well. And so it's, I think, like $40,000 for the building. The actual work is like $60,000. It, the work is where it is because we're putting on a foundation. We're putting, like I said, we're trenching. We're making sure that the lighting is appropriate. We made sure that the pitch was correct for where we are. You know, we've gone kind of make sure that, you know, the thickness and the height and everything. I mean, we've gone to the point where we've thought these details really through.
Thank you. Thanks for all the answers.
Does anybody have any questions for me?
I mean, I would just maybe add, if I could, I mean, I think the, there's been a few things that have came out tonight related to the dimensions on the site plan and all that type of thing. I mean, I think, I don't really know how the commission is feeling on this one, but I do feel like at the very least, if this permit is approved, we're going to need to get a better to scale site plan done by, you know, engineer or something before we can move forward with the project. You know, I don't, I mean, you guys, I guess, could have the applicant prepare that and bring it back to make sure everything is how you want it before you make a decision. But I think there's a little bit of uncertainty. I mean, one of the public members brought up the, the 200 feet thing, which is shown on the site plan, which, which clearly isn't quite accurate, particularly if the building's going to be in the middle of the site. So I don't know. I just wanted to throw it out there.
So my comment was going to be that I think we have to have a better site plan in order to actually go and approve this because in addition to the 200 feet, the 600 feet from any neighbor is also wrong because the property itself is 490 feet, 495 feet long. That's taken right out of your legal description off your grant deed. So for me to approve it, I would want to see a better site plan and your landscape plan as well. Do we have any other comments?
I agree with that, and potentially having the, the folks who are going to build it either, or having, or having somebody local talk to those people who are going to build it to say that, you know, there is sufficient space, there is sufficient ability to trench, just to kind of get some of these things really laid out on, in a plan, in a site plan. I agree with the conditions that are already in there, especially having all the vehicles inside the garage. I did have one more question. So when you're working on a vehicle inside the garage, are you able to still store the other vehicles in there?
Certainly, our plans have changed to where, you know, we can't store everything in the, in the one place inside. So we kind of cherry pick what vehicles that we're going to have. And that would kind of look like making sure that we had some type of partition between the cars and if he was welding or something, or pulling them out in order to weld and then push them back in because they would have, you know, we would have the concrete out there. And then as far as like, I did, I had a question for you guys. And so because part of our garage is, you know, I don't know if any of you work on cars, just can throw it out there. If you're, if you're working on an old car, you usually typically, it's, you know, you buy a chassis or you buy something that you're building. It's like any other project. You have to put the pieces together sort of thing. And so my question is, is that you're saying that we can't have vehicles outside of our garage inside of the fenced area? Because that was part of the, the request for the permit, was that anything that we were working on, we weren't storing forever. We were just using in a short amount of time to pull off what we needed in order, his uncle has a junkyard. So when we're done with vehicles, we don't buy anything that's not, you know, has a, doesn't have paperwork. But after we were done, we take them up, they, they strip the metal and whatnot. But there is a period of time that they're there. And we were planning on, that's the point of the fence for us, is to put it on the other side of the fence so it's not an eyesore. So is that going to be an issue?
That's for you guys.
The fence is six feet tall.
Is it a chain link or is it opaque?
Yeah, it's panel. So that you're not having to be, it's, we want it to match whatever else is going on with the rest of our house. We want it all to flow in F. So the front is all going to be redwood and the back is all green. It's $120 a panel.
So unless the commission decides to add additional restrictions related to this, the current municipal code, again, restricts that type of storage of inoperable vehicles within public view. So, you know, if it was fenced in a manner that the neighbors or someone from the street couldn't see it, then it would be okay.
And we were thinking as far as like the, and you're absolutely right about the exact measurements. I'm going to kind of just a guesstimation on that. But we were putting it at the back of the property because it's the farthest away from the road. Because like, we, our neighbors don't want to see it. We don't want to be robbed and vandalized. You know, that's our whole purpose. If, you know, we have kids coming and taking hood ornaments off of our cars, those hood ornaments are not even found anymore. It's not about a matter of money anymore. Or if somebody comes and takes one of our vehicles, we can't just, I mean, some of them have sentimental value, but for the most part, you can't, you can't replace them. You can get money, but you can't replace them with the money. So that was another one of our issues as well. And then as far as like the buffering, I understand, but, and you're going to have to, excuse me, but quite literally landscaping to me is actually gardening, which I do. Are you talking about shrubbery or are you talking about just the buffering of the fence?
I believe we're talking about buffering being like your distance from your neighbor. Because again, with the dimensions not being.
Accurate.
Yeah.
So the setbacks per code are something very small and miniscule. And we want, we are definitely exceeding that. And so I think that putting together a more efficient site plan will really put some of those worries to rest. And then as far as trenching, we would hire a Jesse Cole, who's an electrician, who's done our other P G N E work when we own the other property, to come out and tell us how he would trench that and give us a quote. Would that be sufficient as far as what you're asking?
I think you were asking more about the foundation, or the slab?
Yeah, the, the, the concrete slab that you're putting it on, just to make sure that, you know.
It's all through a contractor. Everything's through a contractor. They, we, we wouldn't hire and do like a self-build on any of this.
And I think the idea that in general, the, the vote, people are voicing right now is, is just wanting to see that plan. You know, like in, in a typical engineering format.
Well, and that's the thing. So we didn't move forward. We put $7,000 down on this building, but we didn't move forward with the engineering plan or where we're putting the doors based off of, we wanted to make sure that we were, one, in compliance, and two, if we had to change the building, it wasn't going to cost us more money to do that. So if those things are the things that are holding us back, we can move forward with the company and start putting that site plan together because we haven't done that based off of, it's been since October. Like, we just didn't know if it was even, we were almost kind of given up how that it would come through. So we've just really kind of been like, well, you know, we're just going to see what happens. So are you saying to me that we should move forward then and put together the building to show you where the doors and stuff are and get the engineering plans to you?
Yes, we're saying to come back with a better site plan so we actually can see how it is going to lay, I mean, on this, this one, excuse my scribble. You know, like Mr. Hughes was stating, the way it's drawn on here, it shows that your building is up against the fence that you're putting in there. And you have the description on your fence being 65 by 50. That leaves you a pretty small enclosment. And I realize with the big vehicles that you have, you may be pretty good about getting those in and out, but
You're right.
I personally would probably have a hard time with that, you know, so that's where I'm looking at.
No, you're absolutely right. We need to do a better site plan for sure, and we'll do that.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Just one thing to follow up on that, to make sure that the applicant has the clarity needed and for staff as well. But related to the fencing, you know, in the conditions, I'm not exactly sure how this came about, but we're specific about there being fencing or walls or berms or landscaping along certain property lines. I think it would be helpful if there was a consensus of the commission that you wanted to see that fencing and or landscaping along, you know, the back and the side property lines or where exactly you want to see that because that should be reflected and illustrated on the site plan that the applicant brings back.
Commissioner Wilson, did you have something?
I'm supporting what I've been hearing there in the chambers, that a better, an improved site plan, and to Alan's point, with a landscape plan and a fence. And the fence, in my mind, is to protect the vehicles from being seen so they could have a level of security, but also to protect the view from the neighbors on all sides to be considered. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, very selfish on my part, but since I'm the closest person, and I'll tell you how close we are, my driveway, if I stand in the west end of my driveway, Jamie and I could catch, literally throw a ball back and forth. So my question to her, too, the first one she can't answer, if this, if this is, becomes a reality, when is this going to happen? But the more important question is, how long is it going to take for this to happen? Because that's going to disrupt some things. Nothing wrong with that. I just like to know in my life how long this is going to take. And then Dave said, you're, you're going to continue this or are you going to approve something tonight before you get the, the other assurances that you want?
I didn't say you could come back up, Dave.
Dave, I just wanted to come, I'm not positive where everybody's at, but I would encourage you to continue the hearing. Get a site plan, landscape plan. Let us look it over at a public hearing and go from there. I don't think anybody's trying to prohibit them from doing it. We just, we'd like to have some little bit better information.
Any other comments from our commission? Do we have any type of consensus in, if we would like to?
I've, I've heard three of you, so majority say that you want to see a detailed site plan to scale, you know, by a professional engineer or someone of that sort, so.
Yes, I think it would be best to see a detailed, a little better than the, the sketchings that we had. So yes, I would like to see a little more detail on the, on the, the planning part of it.
So. Yeah, and even, even just, even if it was using like a engineering software, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily be, you know, I personally think that, I mean, but I think also it may help you avoid any unforeseen construction pitfalls in the future if you did reach out to somebody who could help you, help you craft this. Because, I mean, it, it seems, you know, I think everyone has a right to a hobby if it fits in our zoning code. And, yeah, I, I support this just with a little bit more planning for neighbors and your own peace of mind.
Well, yeah, I mean, maybe if I clarify, I mean, that this isn't something that necessarily has to be done by a civil engineer. It's usually better if that's the case. There are a few folks out there that will do, you know, site plans that are engineers. But, you know, I think, you know, we have plenty of examples of what a good site plan is supposed to look like. In fact, I think we've shared those previously, but we'll make sure that, I mean, I don't think the council has the option to continue this hearing until a specific date, I think, at this point. It probably makes sense just to rely on the applicant to get the site plan back to us as soon as possible, and then we can schedule it appropriately from there. Do you think you have enough insight on the commission in order to get that done?
Commissioner Williams, do you have anything?
No, just that I'm in agreement with getting a better site plan as well.
So do we need a motion for that, to continue it?
I, I, I don't think so.
Okay. So we're going to continue this hearing to a future date once you're able to come back with a better site plan for us all to review and look at. Okay?
I personally, I.
If somebody's talking from the audience, the Zoom room cannot hear.
Yeah, Commissioner Wilson, so she's asking about having the engineered drawings for the building done because for this type of buildings, you put on deposit, and then for them to actually give you the drawings, you have to pay an additional amount. I don't have a crystal ball on whether the commission will ultimately approve this or not. I would not recommend. We normally don't recommend that you do that until you know. I think it's more important to see the site plan, and if there are any more examples of what the building would look like, that the manufacturer would share with you, that we could share with the commission, that may be helpful. But, you know, we normally don't recommend that you pay that money until you know what the commission's going to do.
All right. So I think we're on to staff reports, if you have any?
I, I don't think I have anything really additional to add beyond what, what we've talked about recently. So unless you have any questions about, you know, projects, all the projects are moving forward. I guess, you know, the city just adopted largest budget ever last week. It's a lot of infrastructure projects in there, which we're super excited about, and just working tirelessly to get them all going and move some dirt.
Do we have any commissioner reports? Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Do any of you, I see you're going for your mic.
I have nothing.
All right. Is there anything that we need to be, have added to the next meeting's agenda? Does anybody have anything?
I actually have a question. The week of the fourth, are there, if, if things are continued or planned, what is our schedule for that?
Normally, we wouldn't have a meeting that week. I don't know if, if you want to speak to some of the permits we have coming up, if you know kind of what we're thinking at this point.
I know we, I know we currently have a handful of permits. We're trying to get scheduled, not only for administrative use permits, but also conditional use permits. Um, before you, for consideration. Um, we have a couple of things drafted up, but in terms of getting the schedule more, more narrowed down, it probably wouldn't be the first meeting in July. It'd be most likely the second meeting in July. That way we can have a couple of projects at one time for you.
And if we can just get all of that stuff in a few days before we have to read it all, that would be wonderful.
We're trying. We'll try to do better.
I know. All right. So if there's no further business, oop, oop, okay.
I've been noticing that, um, just past the police department on Lake Shore Drive, I said, we, we only go a couple of miles out. But the striping on the, on the roads are getting bad. You can't even see the yellow lines. And right in front of our house, we get people that are crossing over the line. So we need to address the fact that we need to get the roads painted again.
Okay, that, that isn't something that's really within the purview of the planning commission, but, um, we are working on doing that. The city did buy a striping machine and, um, we're going to be working into the schedule.
I like your fish over there. Looks good.
We're excited. There'll be another one across the street whenever that project's complete. And then we also have two more in the works. One will be at Highlands Park. Probably that'll wait until the renovation is done. Um, and then one at Red Bud Park as well, so. Yeah, you're going to see a lot of art projects over the next few years.
Right. We will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.